Hey, welcome, everybody. This is our special board meeting. We're gonna take some votes during this meeting. And I guess we'll start with the roll call. Kinsey? Gerlach?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Becker. Andrew will not be joining us tonight. So, okay, and we're also joined at the table by InterCity Student Council and another person as well. If you would please go ahead and
Hi, I'm Cole Lenz. I'm a student council president at John Dewey Academy.
Hi, I'm Maryann Hoppy. I'm a sophomore at Preble.
Okay, welcome. Okay, we're going to get right into it. Let's see here. We're gonna start with some votes. And if someone would please go ahead and read the motion for the first one.
I move that MCC Incorporated be awarded the bid for Contract A General Site Construction at West High School in the amount of And that IEI General Contracts Incorporated be awarded the contract, the bid for Contract B, Building and Site Electrical Construction at West High School in the amount of $1,830,758 as presented be approved.
Second, okay. Questions or discussion? This is part of the referendum project, the huge referendum project at West that is underway and Josh is here if you have any questions. Nothing. Okay. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Would someone read the next motion?
I move that commencing with the 2024-2025 Plan Year, the district will contract with the standard for life insurance and long-term disability insurance as presented be approved.
Second. Okay, do we have any questions or discussion regarding this item? Nancy?
I just wanna make sure that this isn't the IPP thing. No, no, okay, just wanted to make sure. The way it sounds, it's long-term disability, it's, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, anybody? Brian?
And Vicki, you explained to us before why were we doing this vote, but just in case anyone is listening, could you just explain? Why we're bringing this up?
Yes, we neglected to bring this forward to the board for an official vote, although it was discussed at a board meeting work session last month.
We had about, I don't know, three, four hundred votes that night. It felt like that. And honestly, it was just air. We should have voted on it, but we neglected to, so. All right, anything else? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Would someone like to read the next motion, please?
I move that Musco Sport Lighting LLC be awarded the bid for the football stadium lighting project at West High School in the amount of $259,000 as presented be approved.
Second. Any discussion, any questions? Discussion or questions? Okay. This is an additional part of our referendum project. The stuff going on at West is really heating up and it's gonna be an exciting summer over there. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Very good. Would someone like to read the next motion, please?
I move that the employment of staff is presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, could someone read the next motion, please?
I move that the resignation of staff has presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Could someone read the next motion, please?
I move that three-timer of staff as presented be approved.
Second. Go ahead, Brian.
I noticed that we have two retirements on the administrative staff and I see that one is in the audience. I just wanna thank both of them for the time and the effort that they've provided our district for many, many years. Being very familiar with student services from my regular job and the level of expertise that takes place in that area and the leadership, especially Claudia that you've provided for our district for many years is greatly appreciated. It's a technical area that you really need to know your stuff and the guidance that she's provided our district, both of them, district for the amount of time they have is amazing. So I just wanna thank them as they choose to retire and move on with their life.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's move on to the next. Oh, did we not, sorry, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Can I just add something to that? I've been in many, many meetings with Claudia Hendrickson where where things were difficult and things were, hard things were dealt with and kind of witnessed many times her kind of special ability with parents and students. And I just wanna take this opportunity to mention that as she retires. All right, and finally, could someone read the last one?
Move that the transfer of staff is presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. That completes our special meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? I opposed. Okay, we're gonna adjourn into our next meeting. Let's see here. All right, do we have to take roll again? Okay. So I'm gonna welcome you all now to this to our regular work session. Again, we're we're joined at the board with by two members of our InterCity Student Council. Thank you for coming tonight. I just wanna note that we're also joined to after tomorrow at eight o'clock when he's sworn in, our newest board member, Guli. Do everyone a wave? He was, he's newly elected to our school board and will be joining us at our next meeting. So Andrew Becker was also elected on the twenty-ninth, right? Andrew Becker was also re-elected, but he wasn't able to join us tonight. So I just wanted to note who's attendance tonight and we look forward to serving with him. Okay, let's do the roll call again.
Becker?
He is not available tonight, sorry.
McCoy?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Okay, we have five members tonight. And our next item is under recognition. We have some special people joining us tonight. If you would like to go ahead and get started. Are you? Please. Please.
Wow, the new iPhone 15 with that amazing camera. I wish my family had them.
Thank you. Okay. Can you, yes, please introduce yourselves.
My name is Katie Thau. I'm a school counselor at Preble High School.
Yeah, yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Katie Thau. I'm a school counselor at Preble High School. And I've been teaching dance for about nine years. My group is called We Line Dance and More. And so there's several groups of us. This is the cultural aspect one. We actually do do line dance. But this is more of the cultural show performance. And so with me today, I'll let them introduce themselves. But I wanna be just very transparent in that I am a school district employee twenty-five years.
Yay!
I also brought along my husband, Shua Tao. He is with the district as well thirty years.
Whoa!
Hi, my name is Ma Chao. I graduated from Southwood High School and now I'm a student at NWTC and the Foundation of Education. So and I also in partnership in Great Bay District also.
Good afternoon. My name is Chi Rabu. And I'm a senior at Preble High School. And I would like to continue my education for NWTC and for accounting.
Hello, my name is Lee. I studied in Preble High School on senior year. So after high school, I plan to go on NWTC for accounting.
I just wanna add that these three young ladies are first cousins, the two Wu girls are sisters. And they are probably the newest among to the country, five years now, six going on six years. So their English has really perfected well and I'm super proud of them. Within the dance group here, part of my goal and teaching young ladies and gentlemen as well is self-confidence, camaraderie, and teamwork. And they've all demonstrated that, including leadership.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I really enjoyed it. Okay. Okay. So that was wonderful. We're going to move on with our recognition. We do have someone else tonight that we need to celebrate. And that's Nancy Welch. She's, this is her last regular board meeting. She will we're still gonna make her work next week when we choose a replacement for Laura Layton Warren, but this is her last work session and and I just, we wanted to pause and note and note that. So Nancy is anyone who has watched our board meetings in the last few years is a fierce advocate for children. Especially fierce about literacy and how very young children should learn to read and how teachers should be empowered to teach them. And I've learned a lot from her. I think everyone at the board table has as well. And we're gonna miss you. Yeah, it's I'd like to think that your board work is some kind of a capstone to your career as an educator. But actually, I don't think that's true because when you're a teacher for decades like you've been, you're, the impact, we all know that teachers make an impact well beyond kind of our understanding. And so some little three-year stint on the school board is not gonna be the capstone of a career in education. And I really very much doubt that we've seen the last of you. I feel like you're gonna stick stay volunteering like you have through this entire time of service on the board. And that we'll hopefully you know, hear from you with some regularity. So I just wanna say thank you for giving us three years of dedication to a job that is frequently frustrating and, but regularly joyful. Like, you know, that witnessed is a good example and I would say don't be a stranger. So would you like to say anything? Oh, okay. Well, we do have gifts for you.
If I could share while you're opening that, historically, the district provides outgoing board members with a gift. And it's a creation by a student in the district. So what she's opening now is some artwork.
I might have to say something.
Ooh! Gorgeous.
Do we know the student's name? Laurie, do we know?
Morgan, Morgan Van
Nancy? Okay. As an artist who was always inspired by both nature and the appealing visuals of bright colors, I fell in love with drawing tree frogs. After drawing my very first one about a year and a half ago to two years ago, I've been trying to evaluate my drawing techniques specifically to get better at realism. As I have worked on elevating my style, frogs have become my main thing that I both draw and am known for. Ever since I was little, I had always been amused by art, specifically the realism aspect of it. It has always left me in awe when I'd see it as it never seemed to be believable to me that people could draw like that. Once I had started my attempts to draw in realism, I had instantly fell in love with it. Even though I never thought it looked that realistic. I often have peers wondering up to, wandering up to me in disbelief that I was the one who drew it and that, in fact, wasn't just a picture taken off of Google. Now that is one of the greatest compliments out there. Morgan Van Beaver, April 2024. Are you?
That's a good sign.
Oh, and from East, the Fine Arts School. There it is. Beautiful. Oh, let's look at it one more time.
Oh, let's look at it one more time.
He's gorgeous.
He is gorgeous.
And this is.
Let's do that one more time, Nancy. I'm reflected in the picture.
Are you by the frog?
Yeah, I need to tip it down a little bit so it doesn't near so much. Me taking the picture in the picture. That is just beautiful. Thank you.
All right. This is your chance to say anything you'd like to say.
I just want you to know I still really believe in Green Bay. And that we just have to keep believing and we can, we can get this really done well.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay. All right. The next on our agenda is the public forum. I haven't received any, any forums for people who want to participate in the open forum. That's been a long time since we haven't had someone speak. Okay. So next, under education is the, is the 2024-25 calendar revision. And Vicki's just gonna fill us in on that.
Thank you. There are a couple of revisions we're bringing forward to the Board of Education. Three specifically. First, we've added head start dates that weren't included in the original that the board approved. Second is that we're shifting the January No Student Day for middle school staff to a full day Teacher Work Day. What we presented to the board was Professional Development for Part and then Work Day for the other part. So we're making that a full workday. And then third, to address, the calendar, calendar we brought to you had 192 teacher workdays, when in fact it should be 191. So we are converting the Wednesday, April 23rd, workday into a recess day for our staff. If the board will recall, this is over the NFL draft time. So we will not have any students or staff in for Wednesday, the 23rd, Thursday, the 24th, Friday, the 25th of April.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next under education is the Grade 6-11 Social Studies Resource Adoption. And we're going to be hearing from David Johns and Angela. Welcome.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Thank you. Coming to you this evening to share and present and invite your discussion and questions around, recommended for social studies adoption. It's the final, final recommendation for adoptions to be funded through SRF funds. And this evening you'll hear a report highlighting some of the key steps in the process from Director of Curriculum Angie LaCombe. She'll reference several, several areas within the document at a high level. And then again, we invite your questions and discussion.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for having me back this evening. Excited again to be presenting a resource that I believe will best support our students in grades six, essentially through some core courses within the, at the high school level, which can be taken by various grades, but right around that 11th grade level. In the board report, I was able to try to capture a little bit more of the process that we have been working through the past two years since I've been in this role. What we try to do is build off of the Board of Education Policy 361, which really calls out four key criteria that, that we need to look at when we're select, when we're selecting resources. So those are ensuring grade level standards and expectations, making sure that any resource we select aligns with our desired instruction and assessment, making sure that resources we select are free of bias and are culturally responsive, and also selecting resources that ensure that all of our students, especially those with special needs, are able to gauge in learning as well. So with that process, the other key piece that's called out is that as the facilitator of this process, one of my roles is to ensure that we solicit feedback from teachers and that we reflect on that feedback and prepare action steps or respond to that feedback. And so tonight I'd like to outline that process a little bit. Again, try to provide a high-level overview, but there's, there's lots of steps that we've taken. And so I do want to be sure that I try to provide the best picture that I can. Essentially, we noticed again at the beginning of the process that we, unfortunately, we have 55% of our students who are scoring basic or below basic on the 10th grade forward social studies exam. So that is a concern for us and for our community members. And that is one of the reasons why we are looking at a different resource, something that is different, because what we're doing does not appear to be working based on the data that we're receiving from the state level. We brought forward a proposal this past September that included a proposal for different courses. That those courses were built with feedback from teachers in regards to the placement of the content of those courses. So courses were moved around. And we tried to partner courses that have an AP option as well. So in the, in the pathway that you all approved in September, we now have a human geography course in ninth grade and then an AP human geography course. And so that will go through ninth, 10th, and 11th grade so that students have options for AP coursework as well as traditional coursework. The, the resources that we're bringing tonight do not reflect AP coursework. Those AP courses will stay within the AP resources that they have and follow those guidelines. So the resources tonight are for the traditional pathway. In the initial stage, the very first thing that we do is we solicit teacher feedback. Teacher feedback in regards to what priorities do they have for themselves and for our students here in Green Bay. And we set up a Google site this time. This is something new that we're trying that documents the process along the way so that teachers can see each step of the process that we go through in order to select a resource. When we went into that survey that we provided for teachers, we were able to identify some key areas that were important to teachers. Two of the larger concerns that came out of that feedback was, were students' lack of literacy skills, which were prohibiting them from being able to access an area like social studies, which does have high levels of reading within it. And then also students' lack of engagement and/or motivation. And so hopefully, our goals were to find a resource that students could access the content and to be able to engage in the resource. So to try to find a resource that may be more engaging for students. They also noted things like alignment to standards, teacher planning and learning. So does the resource have opportunities for teachers to learn, not only from the vendor, but within the resource? Student supports. Are there opportunities for students, again, that, option for students to be able to access high levels of content, even if maybe they're not the strongest readers in the classroom? Thinking about intentional design, inquiry-based learning. That's one of the things that the state standards called out. Our teachers here in Green Bay also said we would like to have an inquiry-based resource. And then also, and finally, the culturally and culturally and linguistically responsive resources. So they agree with the board policy that we want to have resources that are reflective of our students, engaging for our students, and that are free of bias. So in that initial survey, we did gather information from teachers. About 22 teachers, not about, but exactly 22 teachers participated in the process. There's about 80 social studies teachers across the district, just to give you those numbers. After we have that feedback, then we move into a district team. I know I've described the district teams before. Just to highlight, they, they are representatives from special education, multilingual learners, bilingual education, student services, gifted and talented, as well as the Teaching and Learning Department. So we're looking for a well-rounded district team that understands curriculum and is able to dig into about six resources for this part of the process and also honor that teacher feedback. So as they're looking at the six resources, the people on the district team commit to looking at all six of those. That's, that's labor-intensive and time-intensive. And it's one of the reasons we have a district team, because teachers are busy teaching students. And so they don't have time to review six or more resources. However, people who are working here in district office can find time in their schedule to be able to do that important work. So that we look at the priorities of the teachers laid forward. And then we take those priorities, apply them to our curriculum rubric. And then the district team goes through and needs to evaluate each of those six resources. So they spend quite a bit of time looking at those resources with the goal of narrowing it down to two or three resources. That is, that's a more manageable amount for teachers to be able to thoroughly reveal. So once we have the highest resources from the rubric that we have, we bring those to the teachers. So, I, I should, I should just go back for one second and just say that our district team results, we narrowed it down to three resources. Traverse by Imagine Learning, National Geographic by Cengage, and then a Houghton Mifflin Hardcore Social Studies Resource. Do you have any questions at this point? Yes.
You said you have about 80 social studies teachers in the district and 22 participated in that. That is, they are the ones who, who talk to you about this, what are the criteria that they're looking for? Were they all invited to participate?
I'm sorry. Yes, so our, our communication pathway would be that we send out the survey to building administrators and then also to department chairs, who then share that, as well as the curriculum coordinator, Ashley, who's in the back. She also communicates with teachers through that Google site. It's hard for the curriculum coordinator to directly email teachers because teachers change and it's just not part of the communication process. So we do rely on the building administrator and the department chair to be able to help us communicate that message. So yes, everyone was invited to participate.
And so 22 out of 80 is pretty standard, that's what you would have expected?
Yes and no. Sometimes we see a higher number, but we've seen lower as well. So, at this point, I don't necessarily have a number that I would say I'm, I expect to see. I'm happy with any amount of teachers who will respond and provide feedback because I know that, I, I teach a Spanish class right now as well. So I know that when I'm focused in on teaching, I'm focused in on teaching. And even five minutes to fill out a survey is five minutes. That takes me away from lesson planning and grading students' papers and doing all of the other things. So would I like to see more, a higher number? Of course, I would love to be able to see all teachers respond. I know the reality of that is hard in the day-to-day work of a teacher.
Yeah, and that's a perfect example of how every step of this process needs to be examined to ensure more participation. Angie and I have already had conversations about the critical role of a school-based department chair who knows all of the teachers in their department. And what does it mean? Because it's very, you know, you could teach your whole career and maybe have only two or three adoption cycles that you're a part of. And so when this great opportunity comes up for new materials, we really have to think about the people who are closest to teachers being able to have that leverage to ensure participation. And if they're not participating, why is that? And what has to happen so that we can have, again, that trusting exchange with teachers that to get in on the front, front end of these processes are really important?
Right.
With that teacher selection, I know social studies in the past has been one where you have a lot of, we used to call them orphan classes, where you pick up a section, pick up a section here. Is that, do you think that may have impacted as well where we have a lot of teachers that are teaching other courses as well with it?
Yeah, it could be. When we get to the trial portion of it, that is one of the reasons that we have, I believe that we have a lower, that's what some of the teachers have said, because they don't teach those courses or don't regularly teach the courses. That is one of the reasons I do believe that we've had a lower.
Do you feel that the process would have been better informed by more participation? What I mean by that is you see trends, right? And you see the same responses over and over, over again. Are you comfortable? Or is this a place where when you're looking at the process, you put a toll gate and say, until we get to 40% or 50% participation, we don't move forward? What's your position?
I, I don't at that point, because that's the, the initial one. So when I say I don't, I would not stop the process at the initial point because throughout the process, we were able to gather feedback in many other ways. Ashley has been in the schools a lot, talking, meeting with teacher teams. I've been talking to building administrators. So throughout the process, we've engaged in other ways. So for me, the initial one gives me a starting point so that I can say, and I think it is, it's, it, I believe that the data is pretty reflective of what I've heard from teachers throughout any curriculum process. They care that it, that resources are aligned to standards. They care that students can access them. They care that they're engaging. And so I think those are gonna kind of come out, you know, a little bit more in other content areas, but those are the big things. But then throughout the process, I think that's the time to reflect and say, maybe we need to hold off on this if we're not hearing the things that, that we want to hear in the rest of the process.
Right.
Recognizing as an individual board member, the flaws that take place with standardized tests and especially high-stakes standardized tests and looking at one snapshot of what our students are learning and taking into consideration the amount of students that move from buildings and in and out of our district. And recognizing that social studies is only tested, I believe, in eighth and 10th grade and that this is a one snapshot of our students' performance on it. And also having sat on the social studies curriculum adoption many, many years ago and realizing that sometimes social studies is tough to break into Eastern, Western US history. Does the United States history being in eighth grade and taking the forward exam this time of the year in eighth grade, does that seem like a comfortable fit? And also recognizing that social studies, the exam test concepts, not necessarily facts and figures with it, do you feel comfortable with it in eighth grade? And does that, and I'm sorry, I was swallowing right there. And does that kind of match up with what we're currently doing where it's Eastern, Western? I'm sorry, Western, Eastern than US history?
So I feel comfortable with that part because that came directly from the teachers. So we worked with teacher work teams who were telling us these, these courses need to be switched into different grade levels. I'm not a content expert, so especially in that area, I really have to rely on what the teachers are indicating. And so Ashley had led the teams of teachers who worked through this through work sessions where they were able to take a look at the state standards as well as the forward exam heat maps. Again, one point in time, but one very important, important point in time. And so with that data, yes, we believe that we do have a pathway that will help students, but it was driven by what teachers in that content area were telling us.
I'm glad to hear that the heat map was looked at briefly and didn't influence what's best for kids on this, especially with the order of what we're covering. What is the current, do you know offhand what the current middle school order is?
Ashley, can you remind me?
Yes, so the current order for middle school is that they.
We need to capture you on the recording.
So the current order for middle school is that they do US history in sixth grade, seventh grade, they do geography, and world cultures with eighth grade then being ancient civilization.
Yes.
I know in the past, there was conversation about, I can't remember if I was on the board or not, about Spanish being included and there's some changing with what happened with the curriculum. Do we feel, and if I'm misspeaking on that, please let me know. Do we feel comfortable with this, that any gaps we'll be able to catch up on? So where, if US history was in sixth grade and now it's going to eighth grade, we've got kind of that looping ability. And once again, recognizing that social studies is the idea is, so whatever you're going with it, it'll still kind of catch up. But do we feel comfortable, do we have a plan in place to catch where we loop?
Yeah, so we are also working with teachers again on that piece as well to, to think through what is each year, kind of transition years, going to look like. And so, yes, we do have a plan and we feel comfortable with that. And social studies. And social studies is going to be a bilingual option for students in our two bilingual middle schools as well next year. Okay, all right. So then, then the next piece is to kind of get into a final review. That's where this, this piece has actually changed quite a bit.
Can you hang on just a second? I'm sorry, did I miss some questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I missed it. Go ahead. Yep.
I just had a couple of questions just from a student's perspective here. If we're not taking early SIP in eighth grade. When are we going to be taking early SIP then if we're moving US history to eighth grade instead of sixth grade?
You're just like your brother. I was with him this weekend and he asked me lots of social studies questions. He sat down next to me at a pizza place. He's like, so what do you think about Traverse?
Well, like, because this is, this is the questions I get from my siblings too, because they're going into all these grades and I'm like, I don't know, I'll ask.
No, that's a great question. So actually, teachers were concerned about how much content was also in that. And so we're actually breaking it up into two different pieces as well. So you'll get it in sixth, a little bit in sixth and a little bit in seventh. And then eighth grade will be the US history. The other key piece that I, I do want to point out is that the social study standards have shifted from content-based to skill-based. And so students are reading and analyzing text and watching videos and analyzing text and thinking about cause and effect. And how different events in history have affected people. And so it's a little bit different. You could really put lots of different content areas, but obviously the content that we've selected. Is important for us and, and for the teachers who are teaching those content areas. But it is skill-based, which is a little bit of a change from memorizing facts and events.
Go ahead.
I know that would be a great hope for many kids who wanted to go, to go into AP classes because that's mainly what we do in AP social studies classes, especially now. But another question that I had was, I did hear that since now you guys are. From what I heard was that fresh, incoming freshmen are going to be having to take. AP Human Geography or just regular geography their freshman year. And then everybody who took AP Human Geography their freshman year. Are now going to have to take an economic class, which is now. They now can't take another, they can't take like A push now until their senior year or AP World Down until their senior year. So I know next year I probably have two sections of A push at Preble, but I'm just. Kind of wondering what that was all about.
These are really great questions. Yeah, so the reason that we needed to change that was because the state of Wisconsin. Has five different content areas that they call out that we need to be able to. We have to teach students. And our, our former pathway. Did not provide for that. So we were having students who could go through high school without taking an economics course. And so that was, that was essentially the problem. So we needed to make sure that we had those five domains. For students to be able to take. To your point, it does mean that the electives may shrink for students in their junior or senior year. However, they would still be able to take some of those courses, depending on. What students would like to do in their career, which AP courses are going to be more valuable for them. But that's essentially why, why we made that change.
Just have one more question. And then I also heard too that the new curriculum that you guys are putting in place. Just from my understanding, AP classes, they use AP material, correct? This doesn't affect with any of the new curriculum or anything? Because from what I've heard, one of the teachers told my brother that. The new curriculum, the new coursework is going to be implemented into his AP class next year. And I'm like, I don't think that's right, but I'll ask.
Nope, they're going to be two different courses. So we are not purchasing right now any AP. This resource is not for AP courses right now.
By the way, if I don't catch you the next time, either one of you, just wave your arms around and make some noise, okay? Like, I. Thank you. I would appreciate that. Sometimes that's. Not you, not you, Brian. These guys. Okay, go ahead, Ryan.
This ties into kind of what you were talking about with that, but also with the world history. With Western, Eastern, I'm assuming that's going to have like a spiraling effect where they come to the skills and the ideas with it. Which would also help with the number of students that we have coming and going throughout our district that. Those concepts will be reintroduced, especially through sixth and seventh grade. So if someone leaves our district for a time or comes in, that spiraling effect will help them.
Yes, that would be our goal. So this, this, this summer. No matter what happens with this resource or if we, if, if it is approved or if it's not. Some of the work that Ashley will continue to do with teachers is to develop a curriculum map. So right now you're seeing a kind of the high-level. Pathway for students to take in courses. The work that has to be done within that is that she'll get together with teachers and really think about what is exactly in that course. So, you know, if this resource is selected. She'll look at the resource with the teachers and say, what do we want to see in each of those courses? And then how do we ensure that those skills are, are traveling throughout the courses? Because truly, we don't want to have a, a US history course that only has history standards in it. We want to have geography. We want to have the other domains in there as well. It's the piece of the, the work of the curriculum map and when we get into the nitty-gritty of what's going to be in the class.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so then after, after we do that, so we're just at the initial, initial stage right now, essentially, and we've narrowed it down to three resources. Then what we do, and this is an improvement, I think, that we've made over years. We now are able to give teachers basically full access to the resources. We've worked really hard with the vendors to say, we can't just have. The physical resource in the building, it's not enough. We need to know more. And so what we do is we essentially give all of the vendors that we work with. A guide sheet saying, these are the things that we're looking for. And we highlight, we want inquiry, we want differentiation, we want. All the things that are on the list that I shared before. And then we ask them to create a dashboard, in a sense. With those things in addition to access to the resource. So that, again, Ashley works with the vendor and then puts all of that onto the Google site. And then provides all teachers with access to that resource. And so in the past, we've had, I'll say, you know. I don't know, I, I'm kind of back with Brian when I used to do curriculum. Process when we'd just come down to one fifty-two and like you'd have a couple hours to wander around and look at books. Now you have three months to be able to dig into resources and to be able to have specific. We said we want inquiry, this is where you can find it. So we allow teachers to be able to see those. And then with that though, we do ask that they review all three of them and that they fill out the same rubric that the district team did. So that we can get that same level of information. So throughout that process, we, you can see here in the report, we. We are on page five right now. We had eighteen teachers fill out the full review. So that's a time commitment. So I would expect to see a, a lower number on that. We had some teachers fill it out with their collaborative learning teams and do it together though. So we took those as well. And you can see that pretty much the rankings were the same. So the teachers rated Traverse the highest, same as the district team. National Geographic was second, same as the district team, and then HMH was third, same as the district team. The range you can see for teachers was smaller, whereas Traverse had a, you know, near-perfect score for the district team. And then a little drop for National Geographic. They were relatively similar in ratings for, for the teacher ratings. We also asked teachers, to what degree would you support this resource? We don't ask the district team that. They're. They're not using the resource, so we, we do not ask that question. We do ask the teachers that. Essentially, right around that three out of five range was the, was the rating. We also brought into the process student voice. That is not outlined in the board policy, but it's something that we think is very important for the work that we do. Ultimately, the students have to be the ones to use the resource. And if they're not enjoying the resource, they're not going to use the resource. So we want to hear their voice. We asked students, we gave them a look at all three of the resources. Ashley went into classrooms, provided demonstrations for the students. And then we asked them, which one do you think you'd like to learn from? Right? They're not going to fill out a rubric. They're not going to respond to questions about inquiry. But they can tell from looking at pictures and looking at books, which one they are most interested in. And so again, you can see kind of the same order, Traverse, Sengage and then HMH for student voice. We tried something new this year and we had a community night. Thank our two board members who joined us. We did have one parent who joined us. So again, thank you if you're listening. We are hoping that in the future, we'll be able to communicate that better, to be able to have more community voice in the process as well. Ultimately. Ultimately, we took a look at all the data at the end of the day and we found that Traverse. Scored the highest for the district team, the teacher average and the percentage of students. When we asked teachers which one you would support, you know, to what degree would you support this resource? The HMH resource scored like one point one higher. So not much of a difference, but, but that was noted. Essentially, they were all kind of the same. The benefits of Traverse, I think this is the piece that I, I would like to really highlight. It is inquiry-based. When you look at the feedback that teachers provided from the trial. They, most of the teachers say that it is inquiry-based. It is grade level rich. And the teachers also acknowledged that those who used it during the trial. It has diverse primary and secondary resources. I was in a classroom last week. One of the videos that we saw was a First Nations student sharing information about westward expansion in the video. I've not seen that in a resource before. The students are able to see other students who look just like them when they're utilizing this resource. This resource was vetted by a third party for diversity and equity. So we are assured that we're going to have a bias-free resource that has diverse perspectives. One of the things that Martin's brother shared with me this weekend was like, it's a lot of work though. We have to read four different sources. And then be able to tell about those and answer questions. That's the work that we want students to do. To be able to see four diverse perspectives and to be able to synthesize that information. And use what the background knowledge they have about a content area. So I think we found a great resource in that, in that respect. It is comprehensive for professional learning. That is another big thing that teachers appreciate, especially at the secondary level. We haven't always had robust professional learning at the secondary level. Oftentimes, a vendor will come in for a day, kind of show you how to use the resource. And that is it. We've developed a three-year intensive plan with Traverse where they will be onsite. Working in hand-in-hand with Ashley and the department chairs to provide professional learning. With that said, there was some critical feedback that we heard loud and clear from teachers. In, in both places, I should say. In the initial portion of the, of the work that we did and then during the trial. So both of those times, we heard some critical feedback and I, I do want to address that feedback. The first piece was having full access to the resource. At first, Traverse, being a newer resource, was not able to provide us with full access to the resource. We went to them and we said, we need to have as much access as you can possibly give us for our teachers to be able to reviews, review this. They turned around and provided us with a table of contents, with more information, and then ultimately with access to the resource. They have been an extremely responsive group of individuals who have responded to many of the concerns that we brought forward. The second concern that was initially brought forward was Spanish translations. Again, they are a newer resource, a veteran company, but a newer resource. They do not have their Spanish translations fully developed yet. They are working on those. We met with teachers, this was a large concern. They have committed to being able to provide us with Spanish translations. We will not have them for the start of the school year. But they have committed to the following school year. That is a concern because we do, as I said, we have two. Schools that have bilingual education. So we have partnered with Julie and Gina, who are also here tonight. As well as with Ashley and the vendor. And we brought in, we, we offered the opportunity for bilingual teachers to be able to come in and learn more about the resource. So there's other scaffolds in the resource, other differentiation strategies that will help our bilingual students access the material other than translation. In addition, we have one of our bilingual teachers at Edison who is utilizing the resource. He's been using Google Translate and he's been surprisingly happy with it. Thus far. So I was just in his classroom last week. The, the text was fully translated on the screen for students. He was providing the instruction in Spanish. And so we know that ideally, we would like to have full translation. With the caveat that no primary resources can be translated. That's, that's just a rule in social studies. So there will always be some parts of social studies that cannot be translated. But for next year, Gina and Julie, Ashley and myself have committed to partnering with district translators as well as teachers. Nate, the teacher at Edison, is trying to help us identify what are the most important pieces that need to be translated so that we can help prepare some of those pieces. In addition, during that professional learning, we highlighted other ways that we can help students to be able to access the resource.
I appreciate the effort that our district's going forward to help a company that produces curriculum. Meet that need. I have a major concern with that because we have our teachers working to teach and to have to translate stuff for a curriculum. I'm sorry, not translate, to adapt. And, and not just our teachers, our staff in some capacity. I recognize that it needs to be done and. If that's where it comes down to, then that's where it comes down to. But. With this being a, a company I've never heard of, this isn't, this isn't a company, you know, this isn't my full-time gig. So. Not recognizing the name of them before coming across with curriculum that we've approved. Them guaranteeing that it can be printed in Spanish. I, I'm concerned with that. And I'm curious, first of all. Can they expedite that? Because if we can have our staff do it, that's their, that's their job as the curriculum, you know, providing this. And second of all, if they can't, what's our clawback mechanism for it?
Yeah, they will, they will absolutely be able to. So I, I probably set that up. That, that was probably my miscommunication on that. So they just didn't, they would, they didn't have a timeline of when they were going to have it completed. They committed to a timeline for us. And so we will have that written into our contract. So it, it will be done. And this company does have all of their other content areas translated. They do go through, as I mentioned, a vigorous, a vigorous vetting process. And so they want it done well and they want it done right the first time. So as soon as it is available, they're going to release it to us. With the latest being by next, not, not this fall, the next fall. I'm getting my years. Twenty-five, twenty-six. And we will not have teachers that, that would be translating. We're asking Nate to work with us to identify. Specific areas. So for example, an assessment that would need to be translated.
And I recognize it's, it's staff and I appreciate this individual stepping up to do that, but the concern is. Positions versus people with it. You know, if for some reason this person decides to. Take a promotion within the district or something else, we've, we've tied it to this individual as opposed to a position. With it. And I'm sure he'll do a fantastic job and with it, but that just brings up a concern with it. And David, if we have. Can you give me the specifics of if we have any sort of clawback or what would typically be done on this if. For some reason, the company is not able to do this. I mean, I think, I think in Spanish, that's a pretty significant part of the expectation. What happens if they don't?
So I want to clarify, Nate is not translating anything. A district translator, so it's tied to a position, not a teacher. So there would always be a district translator who would be able to work on translations. Nate is just helping us to identify what things. Need to be absolutely translated. And he's currently teaching in Spanish and using it translated in Spanish. So. There is a way for us to have students read it in Spanish and utilize it in Spanish right now. The problem is, is that sometimes Google Translate isn't as reliable as what we would like. However, Nate is finding that it is working currently in the classroom for the interim until the company does that.
Yes, in between now and when we bring this forward for you to vote on, we'll have the specifics of that contract language. It's last, but I'll talk on this, I think. If someone from Traverse or Traverse by Imagine Learning is listening. Like, I, I want this to be very clear. This is, this is a very important point to me and I'm assuming the rest of the board that. They meet this expectation if they, if this is the resource we go through.
Yeah, it was one of the reasons that we were going to initially pull this from the group. So I was very clear with them that this is a must for Green Bay. They're doing it not because of Green Bay. They're doing it because they are culturally responsive and they know that it is a need. And they have their other content areas translated, so it's not something that we're asking them and they're, you know, caving to Green Bay. Or catering to Green Bay. So I do believe that they will come through on that expectation, but yes, we do want to have. Things in place in the event that that would not happen.
Go ahead, Brian.
We're a very large district and while we may not be as large as other districts throughout the country where textbooks manufacturers and. Curriculum providers cater towards different states and different expectations in there. We're one of the largest districts in the state, so this is obviously. Financial incentive for them to do this the right way as well as, you know, I expect them to and professionally and everything else with that, but. We're we're cutting a big check, so hopefully. That expectation is crystal clear with them.
Brian and then Maren. James and then Maren, sorry, and then.
Okay, so you went through your two critical pieces of feedback, right? The Spanish translation and access. Is there anything else? Because I do have a question that. There's I also want to, but.
There is one other critical piece of feedback that I do want to point out. On page eleven. So those two were things that were initial in the process. We responded to responded to those. Those are, as as far as I know, those are not concerns of teachers any longer. They have felt comfortable with the rest of the process and so we have not heard anything about those two since the initial. Time that we've that we talked to teachers. Out of the trial team, so again, the trial team was small. But out of that trial team, we did get some additional information from them. Critical feedback number one, I think, is one again that shows how committed traverse is to Green Bay. Functionality and speed. So I I don't know if I heard it once. I heard it, you know, a thousand times from my son who's in one of these classrooms. It legs. And so what the, I'm just looking at Maren because her brother is also in that in that same class, so. What that what happened was that we went to traverse immediately. They were able to make some changes within the platform so that the speed improved. They are currently still working with teachers to respond to how teachers click and assign different portions. So the trial team has been meeting with traverse near weekly. And providing feedback as well as them supporting our teachers through answering questions. And so the the functionality piece. We are working on and they are, they are working as true partners and. This functionality, okay, let's see if we can make that happen. And so they've made quite a few of the requests that we've had. Happen already. And then just last week when they were here on site, they shared with the teachers another. Upgrade that they'll be doing to help improve functionality as far as assigning different portions. There, the the final piece I would say is the, because we talked about some of the other ones. The inquiry based instruction. Teachers still want to learn more about how do I teach with an with inquiry first. Just like any textbook, this is a primary, an online textbook. But with any textbook, you can use it in a more traditional way. This resource is set up to start right with inquiry. Here's the big question that we want you to think about. Now let's dig into these resources and try to answer that question. That's the piece that teachers are saying, we want some more support in that. We want to be able to have some professional learning around it. We want to see how that looks. So traverse came on site to to classrooms last last week. And talked to teachers, did some planning with teachers. And and kind of talked more about that idea of how do we lead with inquiry? And they will be able to offer us professional learning, like I said, over the next three years to be able to. Bring that inquiry to life and use the resource with the inquiry first.
I think, Martin, you had a question and then I'll then. Oh, okay.
I actually have a job interview to go to in like two minutes, so if you don't mind, can I please ask my question? Two questions. Are you going to be piloting this?
So we did a trial. Yep, that's how your brother has seen it. So we did a trial at some middle schools, Edison and Red Smith, as well as some high schools, Preble and Southwest. So yes, we have.
Sorry, I actually have two more quick questions. Do we get a textbook?
You do not have a textbook in the traditional sense. The the platform is online and it has what's called a companion text. That has all of the primary sources inside of it. So you're able to use the companion text. Everything else is available online, much like. I don't know, do you remember like mid school math and different resources that are like that?
I feel like having a textbook from a student's perspective would be nice. Because especially I know kids who their comprehension skills and their reading skills aren't the greatest. And they find reading from a textbook is a lot more helpful than reading from a computer screen.
You actually just reminded me of something that's really important. One of the great pieces about this resource is that teachers can set the reading level to to grades lower. So that it doesn't change the content, the student still, the content remains the same. But students are able to read it at a lower reading level so that they are able to hopefully access that content. So that's only possible because of it being online. The other piece is that on that, in the online textbook, there's still features to annotate. Students can take notes on the side. They still have all of these tools that would be able to help support their reading comprehension as well.
And just to follow up with that, you said they were going to be able to have to like. Analyze text and then be able to like do something with that and compare and contrast or whatever. Do you think, especially with kids who don't, like I said, don't have the greatest comprehension skills? And especially kids who are dyslexic as well, are they gonna have some sort of extra help if they need it? Or some sort of other thing that they can use to get what they need?
Yeah, absolutely. So we always would rely on teachers professionalism and knowledge to be able to. Support students who have some some unique needs. However, I will say this, in the classroom I was in last week, this is how it went. Students were able to read a text. Again, it was projected in Spanish and the teacher actually read portions of the text and then. He would stop and students would jump in, so they were kind of following along as he was reading. The next portion, the next source was a video, which was a student speaking. So they didn't have to read anything to be able to get the content. There were visuals. And there was a student who was sharing the visuals. And then from there, that's when they had to answer questions. So in that sense. Besides just the text, there's other videos. There's, oh, and then they also did one other thing. They looked at a. A picture. So a primary source that was a picture and they talked about that. So they had three different resources. One they had to read. One was a video that they watched of someone speaking and then another one was a picture that they shared. And so from those and the discussion that they had with other students in their classroom. That's where they got the information to be able to respond to a question about westward expansion.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, James. Lynn's been waiting a really long time, I saw.
So the rubric for the teachers. On traverse, I think, received eighty one percent, point eight one. Right? But then on the question of supporting the use of the curriculum. You ended up about sixty six percent. So but all of them ended up about sixty six percent, you know, three point three out of five or whatever. So can you kind of walk me through how tight that distribution was or did it, did it represent? There are some some teachers that just didn't support change or some, was it just? Everyone just had a preference for the other one?
Yeah, so it ended up being either fours or twos. Why the teacher selected that, I'm not sure. But was it one five? One five, otherwise there were twos and fours. So I I mean, I can't, I don't, I don't know. I can't speak to why teachers supported or don't support it. It's one of the things that I'd like to learn more about because when when we're rating the resource, it's high for everyone saying it has inquiry. Everyone was saying that it's culturally responsive. They were, they were highlighting good things about it. So when it comes to supporting it, I I don't know. It's it's something that we have to explore more.
Okay. So we are, when we get to voting, we will be voting to adopt this to start this fall, right? And I just want to ask one time. Can you, are you all confident? That in this first year, our students who are Spanish speaking and Spanish reading are not going to be at a disadvantage?
So I I can only speak to. So first of all, the answer is yes, a resounding yes. As a parent here. I would not bring forward a resource to this Board of Education that I did not want my own child to have access to. My students are not bilingual, so they have a, they have. They're, they're going to be able to access this. In the classroom that I was in last week, though, it was a bilingual classroom. Again, it it was translated from a click of a button with Google Translate. The students were able to speak in their native language if they chose to. Just when the picture came up, it was a picture of First Nations people. It was about westward expansion, right? So it's a picture of First Nations people who are being forced to to move west. Students had probably a five minute conversation just from looking at the picture. Talking about. They're they're bringing all their things with them. They they look very sad. Oh, they're feeling at their house. The whole thing, just from a picture. Then the teacher supported them by reading some of the text. And then they heard a video of a student speaking and so they they listened and they had Spanish subtitles within the video. So I do not believe that they are going to be at a disadvantage. I did not see any students at a disadvantage in this classroom at Edison last week.
So looking at this report. I appreciate this conversation. I think it's the right conversation and I just want to acknowledge that. The level of detail and the questions that are being asked. And your ability to answer them is all founded on the the amount of work. And how you laid this out and I really appreciate on this because. I think if we can create some methodology where we kind of follow this, we will be able to compare. You know, curriculum adoption to curriculum adoption and start seeing. The differences in whys and acts the next level of question, right? As we, as we see more and more of this, I just wanted to acknowledge the work and appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Nancy.
In our morning work session preparing thing, we talked about. Some teachers complained that the engagement factor of the students was low. And then. David said that there, you knew about that concern and that there was talking among the teachers. Was that included? Did all the teachers who were in the initial pilot, did they all get that information then?
So. Yeah, so kind of two pieces happened. One was the initial piece where a concern is that. There was a lack of engagement and motivation from students in general in social studies classes. The trial team. I I don't recall anyone in the trial team necessarily saying that there was a concern with engagement. They rated engaging texts pretty high in the trial data. I think most of the teachers, I think it was five. Said it was engaging for students.
This is related to students potentially just being on the platform.
Oh. Yes, okay.
I added that clarity, that was what our conversation is about.
Yes, okay. That kind of went to the inquiry piece. So yes, there was a principal as well asked the. Like, hey, if we have mid school math that students are on online and then we have the the literacy resource. Where students are online and now we're going to have a social studies resource that is online. Yes, there there has been that question. I think that it speaks to the inquiry piece in that. And the understanding, we have to do a better job and we have to be able to show teachers how it could look in the classroom. But ultimately. We are, any resource could be that way. We need to have resources online because we have things like what we saw last week where a school had to close for two days. We want resources to be online so that students have access to those resources. Through this process, I talked to a parent who didn't know that. His son could bring home a book because they have classroom sets. And so he went and purchased a resource that we have. We don't want that kind of stuff to happen, so we need to have the online platforms to make it accessible for all students. We also have to make sure that we're providing professional learning so that we don't have students just looking at the computer. That's not the intention of an online resource. If the traverse team was sitting here, they would say that's definitely not the intention of their resource. With that resource comes the teacher edition that's going to provide. Ways, strategies and activities that students are doing. So like the classroom that I described there. If you can imagine, we could have groups of students, one group of students watching the video. Another group of students reading the text, another group of students looking at the picture. Then maybe they move around the room and they all talk or they create a poster. Those are the teacher instructional strategies that are going to engage students at a higher level. A resource can only do so much. We have to really rely on the expertise of teachers to be able to take it to that next level. How am I going to engage students and make sure that I'm not just assigning the reading and then having them respond online? That's not our intention with this resource. And so we intend to provide and dedicate time for professional professional learning. So that we can help teachers to see what the potential of the resource could be. But yes, it was a concern and yes, we have talked to, Ashley has been out, she's taught a couple. Classes and so she's been out working with teachers in the trial team to be able to have those conversations and. Do some planning together. We actually built in. Planning sessions with traverse for next year as part of the professional learning. So that we can plan together because planning is the the part and there's a lot of teachers that don't have. Teams that they can plan with either, so that makes it even harder for them to be able to have that collaborative planning.
Any other questions? Okay, does that complete your? Your presentation? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next. Under operations, we're going to talk about some job description changes and we're going to hear from Julie and Gina.
Yeah, we've got a couple different people, if I could.
Yes, please.
Mike, you want to join us? Gina, Julie? As we've been doing for the last couple of months, we're trying to update all of the job descriptions and some of them. Are more timely in need than others. So today we're bringing forward four job descriptions. Three existing positions and one is a a new one we want to share that is grant funded. So it's. Mike, do you want to tee up anything or should we go right into it?
The only thing I would share is, and good evening, everybody. The only thing I would share is that. Just delineating between the idea of. Just because we have job descriptions that that may be new or may be revised, doesn't mean that there's. Pent higher necessarily, right? We're trying to be continuous improvement. So. Sometimes it might be tied to something brand new that could be higher down the road here. Sometimes it's just, hey, this is due for an update, etc. So I'll let Julie and Gina each speak to their particular ones, if that's okay.
Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to let. Let me speak to the particular changes to the job descriptions of. The after school programming, which is one of the programs I am lucky to oversee. So the changes that were made to those job descriptions, the first one is the coordinator position. If you look at, and I'm just giving you a brief summary of what those changes are. Realistically, what I was looking at when we were reviewing it is. The title of that particular coordinator position is encompassing of the after school program. Not just the site directors. So it really look at the coordination of. The the program in itself, which then is actually what that. That particular position does day in and day out. So it's really reflective of the day to day activities of that particular job. Then the changes throughout the job description really are reflective again, provide. We went line by line to two years after we created this position. Does this make sense? What needs to be more clear now that we have had the position for a number of years? How can we make that clear? So providing clarity and deleting items that no longer were part of that job description. And in terms of the site director positions, that's, you know. And in terms of the site director positions, that's, you know, the other job description that we updated. We really wanted to make adjustments to be reflective again of the day-to-day job that the site directors do. And taking, you know, and again, we have had the position for a number of years, but really making it clear and taking out um items that no longer fall within that responsibility. Any questions about those? Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm bringing forward a job description, which is the new job description. It's a newcomer and refugee school social worker. Um, and this position would be funded one hundred percent from the school-based mental health services grant program. Just so you are aware, there's been a switch in how those dollars are allocated. Um, so from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three, it was a competitive grant, and districts had to apply and compete to get the funds. Um, with the twenty-three, twenty-five budget, Act nineteen changed how those funds are allocated, so it is no longer competitive. It is solely based on per pupil amount. Um, so it is a little bit more stable, you are not competing for it. Um, being a large district, um, you know, we can hope to continue to see large dollars for that. Um, so this newcomer and refugee school social worker will work with students who have that designation. Just so you are aware, this school year sits since September first, we have enrolled two hundred eighty-eight students in grades one through twelve, where it is their first time in US schools. Two hundred eighty-eight students, um, and that was up until April third. Um, so eighty-six percent of those students are Spanish-speaking. So you can see we are preferring a Spanish-speaking school social worker if this position would get filled. Uh, thirty-four countries the students are coming from. Um, so we feel this is a, a big need to support our students and to work with those community agencies as well.
Can you say that again? How many, how many countries?
Thirty-four countries. Um, and we've only looked at first grade through twelfth grade because for our four K students and for many of our kindergarten students, it automatically is their first time in the US schools. So that's just first grade through twelfth grade. Two hundred eighty-eight we have enrolled since September first.
I'm gonna challenge you a little bit here on um, i- if you have this um information. I'm curious, um, the, kind of the, the, how, how, how are these people landing in Green Bay? Are they, are they here for work? Are they here for uh to, I, I mean?
Yes, and yes. Um, we do hear that many of the families do have families that live here. Um, Green Bay is a great place to live. It is very safe. Um, there are job opportunities. It's very easy to get around. We're a smaller community. Um, schools are great, and there is uh an established uh community support for them already um with various community organizations. So I think Green Bay is a very um, yeah, attractive place for families.
That's wonderful. Thank you for sharing that. I just, uh, the, the, the depth of um all those countries, that's just amazing to me, so. Go ahead, Brian.
I think two hundred eighty-eight students shows us what a great job your department's doing and our staff is doing to welcome students and provide an education for them. With this being a grant-funded position, you said that there's not, it's not as much of a concern of having that cliff where, you know, we just know where the competitive nature part of it. When that act was passed, and I'm not familiar with it, does it appear that there is going to be ongoing support from the community, and is there a way that we as a board can stress with our community members, both our employers and groups within the community, how important those resources are? Because this is a very specific position. Um, hopefully we can find some, I mean, this is a very unique skill set in a, in a tight labor market with it, but hopefully there's opportunities for us as a board and as a district to stress within the community. This is an important position. Contact your state legislators to continue to fund this. So it's just, I guess my question, is this only funded through two thousand twenty-five or suspended continuing on after?
So like I said, this money has always, well, not always, but it's been in the budget, but it was competitive. So the um legislature has always put this pot of money aside um for mental health services. And um they just changed it to be non-competitive where it's a per pupil. So the money has been there. If I had, I don't know if it's gonna be in the future, but I would say we should all be advocating for these funds to be.
Claudia has something she'd like to add.
So what's different about these funds is that Tony Evers put these into, um, he signed, this is part of the bill that he signed into perpetuity. So until we have a different governor and or a different um legislature, it's going to be uh ongoing. And then it's, it's probably gonna have, so when that time or comes where we might have a, a opposition to it, we would look forward to you all um helping us to put that forth in the, for the future.
Your confidence is overwhelming in that, and I appreciate it tremendously, but recognizing that, um, you know, redistricting, retiring, you're seeing a lot of it lately, and just the whims of school funding over the last twenty-five years. I appreciate your confidence on that, but I think it's definitely something that we as board members in the community should continue to let their state legislators know this, because this is all state-funded. There's no federal funds in this, I believe.
I think our board is particularly uh sensitive and understands the, the the politics around public education and public education funding.
Well, I, I just wanna add that mental health is something across the entire country that people are looking at as a huge need, and what we've seen is a lot of these students coming over from these other, from other countries are coming from some real horrendous circumstances with some having seen and endured a lot of horrendous um atrocities, and therefore the need is really high for somebody who works specifically with this group to, to look at their mental health needs and help to improve those needs moving forward.
Um, you said that the vast majority of the students that you've enrolled in the last year are Spanish-speaking. Are there any other languages that rise to the top that you say, uh, these are, these are the ones that are gonna be spoken, needed?
We are seeing a number of Swahili students entering our district. Um, in fact, we um are looking for a Swahili um bilingual interpreter and translator. So if anybody knows, if anybody's listening, um, it is out on WeCan. Um, so that has been our latest language group that Catholic Charities, who is our resettlement agency here in Green Bay, has been resettling.
And Julie has this all broken down really well. If you want her to give you a memo of, of all of the details, she's very detail-oriented. So if you'd like to have more information around this, like would, how many of each language you were seeing, what grades they're in, Julie's got it all.
I would love to see that in just a brief memo form, um, just because um it allows us to um know our district better. And um that's, to me, that's important information to have when we're out in, especially when we're out in schools and in the community. So, Brian?
Recognizing that there may be um people that might not understand how I don't wanna say schools work, but students are coming in that would be serviced by this position or currently being serviced by other social workers. And by having a specific, a position specific with the skill set, that also opens up the time and resources that those other social workers have to work with all of our students throughout the district and meet that mental health need that while this is a very specific position to a specific group of students, it indirectly will benefit all students and all of our district and our community.
Go ahead, James.
Uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that when a student enters the district, the clock starts ticking because they have one year before they have to start participating in standardized testing and everything. Is that the case for these populations as well?
So, yes and no. So students get a one-year exemption from the state English Language Arts Assessment. They are required to take all other parts of the state assessment in their first year immediately.
That's never gonna make sense to me.
And, and many of them have, many have never been in school at all. And they're coming with zero transcripts, and majority of them are secondary students coming with no transcripts, which has been an ongoing concern of ours too, that we've been trying to address.
Okay. Any other questions regarding this particular position? Okay, is there, are there, are there more things?
Yeah, and then the last one is the Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you, Claudia.
Um, this is just a general update on the actual current work expectations.
Okay. Any, all right, thank you, guys. Okay.
Mike, do you ever just wanna stay there? We'll do Angie's next, and then you're up again?
As long as I don't have to pay the fees, sure, I think that's what's next, right?
All right, next on the agenda is the
Who's that?
Good evening, everybody. Um, so this year, just like every April, um, we are, uh, we come to the board, propose our fee schedule. Um, if you recall, last year, we made some slight increases to our fees. Um, like five dollars, I think it was the adjustment, because we hadn't increased those fees for a very long time. This year, we are proposing to stay status quo from last year, so there are no changes within this twenty-four, twenty-five fee schedule. Um, just as a, I guess as an FYI, last year, we collected about six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in student fees, which include graduation, transcript fees, parking fees, um, and then the co-curricular or the co-curricular fees, like the passes um and events uh for students to attend. And then this year, we have in the budget about six hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and we are on track to, to collect that, so just as a kind of an FYI.
Can you talk a little bit about, so that money comes in through these fees? Is it just um in our budget then to use um in all its
For the operations, yes. So, so once in a while, we'll get a question about, well, where did that seventy-five dollars go? Um, we can't say specifically, but it's to operate the school district, so salaries and benefits.
It's not sequestered in any way. Very good. Lynn?
Just a question about the um waiver fees at the bottom of the uh report. Um, about how many students or what percentage, I don't know how to even ask it, um, actually do go through both of those steps. They, they are qualified for free lunch and they're shared with accounting, blah, blah, blah.
Yes. I forgot the routine. It's been a while. Um, uh, the, so the free and reduced overall, um, and this is an approximation of where we are as a district as a whole for free and reduced is about sixty percent. I think it's a little bit higher than, like, that's kind of around sixty, sixty-five percent. So um, kind of what that process looks like is if you qualify for free lunch, not reduced, but free lunch, um, then we have to go through a process, and then what the system will do, once we get that correct paperwork, the system will automatically waive those fees for that student. Um, but we have to have, we have to have certain paperwork on file in order to do that. We can't just waive based on your status. They have to give us permission as a parent, or guardian has to give us as a school district permission to waive those fees.
And that's what I was wondering, what percentage of those who are eligible actually do give you permission to do that?
Um, I'd have to get back to you on that, Lynn. I mean, yeah, it, it's, it's probably a little bit more than half. So, right, so they sit on, so, so I guess the difference between food service fees and student fees is that we collect on cash basis accounting. So when we get the money, we book it. It's not like we have this large payable on, you know, or receivable on the books that we never collect that revenue from. So it's cash in, then we, then we um record that revenue. So um even if we don't get that, right, information from that student for all the years that they're here, um, then, you know, that bill will just go unpaid, right? And then, and then it just gets written off eventually.
Bren?
Recognizing that some of these are um it's important to have students involved in participating in their school curriculum events and extracurricular events and sporting events, and the district community has supported major referendums at stadiums and everything else with it, and that really ties kids to our schools, which helps them. Um, also recognizing that the level of accounting that may take place at a gated mission, if a student doesn't have three dollars, I'm sure there are ways to get those students into those games with it. I'm just curious, do we charge uh senior citizens to come to our events? Do you know offhand?
I do not know, but I do know that we aren't charging our students to attend their home. Or I believe, like, if, if a probable student goes to Southwest to watch, we would not charge that student. I believe that um we did move forward with that last year as a new thing, so.
I don't know if it, can I follow up? Okay. I don't know if it would be tied in with the student fees. Um, but seeing the amount of support that our community has provided with this and recognizing that um gate tickets to soccer games, it's not gonna close the three million dollar deficit. I'd like for us to look into whether we can waive fees for senior citizens in our community and how we go about doing that, whether it would be taking place on this fee schedule or just have it reintroduced at some point. I see other schools doing it in the area, and I, I think it's definitely an easy thank you to people that have been very involved in our community and supported us.
Okay, I, it's worth looking into, totally, so, okay. Any other questions regarding fees? Okay, thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. What's that? Excellent, okay. So um next is substitute uh guest teacher compensation.
Yes, um, thank you again. Um, uh, miserably and I have analyzed the information related to our compensation structures for our uh external substitute or guest teachers, and we've updated the memo that was brought to you uh back in two thousand twenty-two. Um, for the past three years, uh, our substitute teachers have received a, a full day rate of one hundred seventy-five dollars, half-day rate of eighty-seven fifty, and when they take on a longer-term role, twenty-one days or more in a position, two hundred dollars. Uh, we're here recommending um a, an update, um, which uh would be one hundred and ninety dollars for full day, ninety-five for half day, and two hundred ten dollars for longer-term assignments of twenty-one days or more. Um, we are exceptionally grateful to our substitute guest teachers. Um, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we had four hundred and three different adults that agreed to serve in this capacity. Uh, they are our most, uh, in, in many cases, some of our most nimble, flexible. Um, in short, you know, like, they react at a moment's notice, and, and we have many folks that, that serve more than a hundred days a year in this, in this capacity. Last week, for example, if you'd noticed, we had some weather uh circumstances last week, right? And so a number of our staff may not have been able to come to work due to power outages in their homes, et cetera, transportation issues. And uh our substitute guest staff are, are just fantastic folks who continuously serve our students and our, our school communities. We're very pleased to support them. We recognize that they need to um pay for gasoline. They need to, you know, get new shoes, uh, they need to buy a lunch, uh, when they come and do that work, and the cost of those things continually does go up. We feel that it's an appropriate time to bring forward a recommended change in the rate that we um compensate them at. Angie, anything to add?
James?
I just recognized that I think that the difference between the full day recommended and what is on the books now is about eight percent difference, and that represents basically the pay increase that we've provided full-time staff last year as part of that, so I think it's an appropriate amount of increase. Can you describe, um, what is the current cost associated with um substitute teachers?
So I'm just looking at what we budgeted for this year. James, we had about one point three set aside in Fund Ten for sub-teachers, and then one point one five million in LTE or long-term subs budgeted for this year. and then 1.15 million in LTE or long-term subs budgeted for this year. Fund 27, so just hold on. I don't have my calculator, so I apologize. I left my phone over there. 1.3. And then in special ed, 200,000 in sub costs, teacher subs. And then the LTE is at 126,000. And those are the big buckets.
Brian?
Thanks for recognizing the cost of living adjustment there, James. I appreciate seeing that as opposed to increase, but it's good. With that, also, do you know how many roughlys, just curiosity, are more than 21 days of our subs? Just a percentage or a rough guess?
I apologize. No, I'd have to, I'd have to get that information for you. Happy to do so, though.
Anybody have any more questions regarding this? Okay, I think we're good then. Okay, next, under operations is, we're going to get an update from Vicki about the Boundary Adjustment Advisory Committee.
Okay, and Lori's going to join me as well.
Lex Lee is going to join us at the table. Hi, Lori.
Thanks for this opportunity to give an update. This cycle of facilities master planning has been an ongoing project with the district since 2016. And one of the major drivers of this work is bringing us back to the projected budget deficit that we continue to face, due in part to the fiscal cliff caused by the ending of SHER funds, which end at the end of August, Angie, September, August, September 30th. And public education funding that hasn't kept pace with inflation. I would reference the public back to a document we shared on June 5th that outlines the funding for public education and how that helped us get into a budget deficit, along with many other districts in the state of Wisconsin. In addition, our district's facing a declining enrollment. In five years, we're, we are projected to have 1,463 fewer students enrolled than this current school year. The culmination of all of this work, the facilities master planning led to board resolutions back on June 5th, and later that month approved by the board, that included for the first phase, the closing of three schools, Wakeyak Elementary School, Keller Elementary School, and Tink Elementary School. In addition, a resolution was presented to address the impact of adding K8s and shifting boundaries, which is the task that was presented to the Boundary Adjustment Advisory Committee. We provided a, a list of, and this document will be uploaded to Board Docs soon, by tomorrow. We provided information to the Board of Education on the resolution statement. And then District and Advisory Committee response, how we addressed each of those statements to ensure we were following the board directive. Following the board's resolution, and board members, I'm on page four. We contracted with Woolpert, and they developed two conceptual scenarios for the committee to review and to provide feedback. Committee member feedback often expanded beyond the board's charter. And I think that was a large frustration for them, having to narrow it back to the focus of the work. Some of their comments included concerns about whether 4K8s are the direction that we should be headed. A lot of questions about equity issues, often about communication. Are we really reaching all of the people that we should be getting feedback from? Smaller adjustments to boundaries for schools, and that the district should consider redrawing boundaries for the entire district. Those were some of the conversations we were having. They did a great job. I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a while, but I'm really proud of this advisory adjustment committee. And premature to say this, but I appreciate their willingness to continue doing this work, even though we haven't come to a resolution yet to bring to the board. Woolpert stayed within the parameters of the charter and produced the two scenarios that we tweaked from the committee feedback and then brought to the public. Lori, can you talk about the efforts to get feedback?
Yes, thank you. So as you are aware, on March 12th, we had a noon and 6:00 PM presentation by Woolpert at the Neville Museum. I just want to say, I felt like the Neville ended up being a really good venue for that. The auditorium is very nice. It's a great parking, easy access. So I, I think we might do that in, for those types of activities. In addition, we had our district translators there, as well as we used our ILA, which does a broadcasting of, you pick out the, we, we just have it set up for the speaker. And when individuals come, they select the language that they would like to have it translated in. And so while nobody used it, we did test it. It was pretty interesting. It was, it was a great to see how it works. It's a very neat. And so we had extra laptops there in case people didn't have a personal device. So we were prepared. We rented space at the Neville that week, for the remainder of that week, and had large maps there. We had the QR codes for people to get to the survey online, as well as we had paper copies. And then the presentation played on a continuous loop, both in Spanish and English. We had all of the materials on the website. The presentation video was provided by Woolpert ahead of time, so we could have that translated in Spanish. And then the presentation was translated in English, Spanish, or not translated in English, but was provided in English, Spanish, Mongol, and Somali, as were the surveys and the paper copies of those. We also provided this on our social media sites. It was communicated on the, in the, the meetings were communicated on the community calendars. We provided it on our, in our newsletters, both to staff and to families. And then we did extend the survey twice to try to get more feedback. And again, that went through, you know, emails to families, social media, et cetera. And then the district, on the website, we also included both in, on the website and the surveys, well, their emails to our families, that there was a boundary locator provided by Woolpert. So to really bring it to that personal level, individuals could just put in their address and find out exactly if these scenarios would make any changes to their school boundaries.
Thanks, Lori. And some of the feedback that we received from the committee included the outreach, and the message was clear that if we want more feedback, we have to go to them, go to the community. We do have capacity issues right now to be able to do that, but I think it's something we have to discuss moving forward when we need that kind of feedback. What does that look like? And who can all help to make sure that we're getting to everybody that we need to? Despite the extension of the deadline, which Lori spoke of, there were only 663 responses, and 477 of them provided written comments. For scenario A, 53% were unsupportive or very unsupportive. For scenario B, 54.7% were unsupportive or very unsupportive. Variety of comments, but they focused on concerns regarding transportation, transparency, stability, and student well-being. That was a loud one that we heard. Boundary changes for specific schools, impact on special programs. How will this impact us financially? Equity, again, was a concern, and community involvement. In addition to the survey, a meeting was held with NEW Latino Education Task Force. Members presented an alternative proposal on boundary changes. And although this feedback was outside of the board's resolution, it was shared with the board. District leaders and board representation attended Village of Alloway Board Meeting on their request. And we provided information on the scenarios. One of the most significant objections to the scenarios are the changes to secondary schools and the feeder patterns, especially concerns with impact on co-curricular programming, and whether we would have enough CTE licensed educators and other specialized programs for staffing specifically. Our last committee meeting was on April 2nd. Woolpert presented the survey results and asked for feedback from the committee. If you had a chance to wash, watch, you probably felt their frustration. And as I reminded at the end, that's a natural part of this process, and it's part of why districts don't do this all of the time. It's hard work. But at the end, each committee member was given an opportunity to respond, and they all shared their commitment to this work, understanding that it still has to be done. We must address our boundaries to, to keep working towards that fiscal cliff. And I just, I want to read the statement. Ultimately, the committee members in attendance responded that they could not support either scenario, but were willing to continue working on boundary changes. The current two conceptual scenarios were non-starters. So our ask of the board tonight, direct district leadership and the Boundary Advisory Committee to bring to the Board of Ed a scenario C, that uses the Facility Task Force recommendations, which focused on building educational adequacy, enrollment, and short and long-term maintenance needs, continues to address the budget deficit through school closures, consolidations, reduces overall district capacity to address the declining enrollment, and minimizes student movement and feeder pattern disruptions with a focus on elementary schools. And I put the rationale below. Feedback doesn't support the K8s because of the boundary changes and the feeder patterns. Community feels overwhelmed with the amount of change at one time. I, I felt that too from the committee. So if we can chunk this, maybe do a smaller portion right now and continue to revisit this. And then budget's deficit and declining enrollment must continue to be addressed.
Okay, um, thank you, Vicki. Brian, it was Lynn. Did you, did you raise your hand, Lynn? Go ahead, Lynn. You go first.
Just want clarification. So I, I see what your request is, and that makes sense. In other words, come up with Plan C, because A and B are not going to be accepted. Would you be working with Woolpert on that? Okay.
Yes. Yes, we would.
We often talk about declining enrollment, and the community sometimes views this as a Green Bay-only issue. If you look at it, this is a national issue, from schools that are urban schools to prosperous, to expanding suburban schools throughout the country, throughout the states. There are very few districts that are growing on this. Unfortunately, I don't think the media covers that aspect as much as would be appreciated. Oftentimes, we see the cameras leave soon and not addressing the declining enrollment that's taking place throughout our country, throughout our state. And there's many articles on that. And also, looking at the school funding issue, whenever we've talked about that, oftentimes, it's been crickets coming from the public on it as far as how we fund schools and the system on there. So I just want to bring that up again with the board, that only is not happening just to Green Bay. Declining enrollment is happening throughout the country and throughout our state. And this isn't just a Green Bay concern. This is a major demographics shift that's taken place since the Great Recession and other impacts that have just impacted the birth rate. You look at, colleges are experiencing it, the city's going to experience it as far as programming and issues on there as well. So this is not just a GBAPS issue. So just to have it out there.
Go ahead, Vicki.
Thank you for saying that. And in addition, if we just look at public school funding, special education alone in our district, which I know the state legislature has been talking about potentially taking this up, our district, our district alone transfers about $30 million from our general fund, or from, yeah, general fund into special education to help support the, the underfunding that we're seeing there.
Brian?
Just as a reminder, the state promised to fund it at a much higher level many, many years ago, and has not kept up with it. And these are often, just by the nature of it, more expensive students to teach. And it just, it happens. And that's what we need to take on as a school district, but as a state and as a federal level, the adequate and fair funding of public schools. So contact your local state and federal officials and share that concern.
Vicki, you mentioned briefly about limited capacity as far as our administrative staff. Can you talk a little bit about that?
It might not look like it, but we are cutting staff at district office. We have been for at least the last four years, five maybe. And every time we don't backfill a position, the rest of the team are left to pick up that work. And we're seeing some of the consequences of that, which you'll hear more about over the next couple of days. So as much as we would desire to, I think a committee member said, go knocking on doors if you want to get some feedback. I would love to be able to do that, but we just don't have the, the staff to make that happen.
Yes, I, I think it's important for people to understand how many positions have been eliminated here at DOB and how that affects our day-to-day work quite radically. Because we have a lot of big, a lot of big work ahead of us this year. And I, I'm tempted to say that this year is unusual, but it never seems like, like any, like, like anything changes. It's, every year is a big year. So the, the work that's required from a district, our size, and the people it takes to facilitate that work on behalf of students is, is like an army. And, and I, I'm not saying we shouldn't eliminate positions. I'm, I'm, I'm for that, but it does affect, there's a downside to that. So no, we can't go to door, door-to-door and maybe do some of the engagement we would like to do. But I'll leave it there for now. So, James?
Okay, so Vicki, what I'm going to, how I'm interpreting this is that the, of the four resolutions, the one that was K8, it was a, a grouping or a categorizing of several options to close schools that we knew were going to disrupt the feeder pattern, patterns, right? And it was all aimed at trying to level the populations of, you know, high school students across our, our four high schools and use all of those facilities appropriately. I hear a resounding, that's too much to, to do in, at one point. I, I can't, I have to say that I'm, I'm disappointed, obviously, with, with that result, because I'm trying to look back in time and identify a time when a successful advisory committee said, yeah, make big changes. I think it was tried in 2013-ish time period to, to level populations across the high schools. Again, in 2006, we tried to build a new high school on the east side. Oh, I can't remember the exact time, timing of that. But I'm, I'm trying to determine if providing an extension to an advisory committee to continue to work a problem is viable. You know, I, when I, when I think about this, I'm like, we, we, we are, we knew that there was a, a chance that they didn't have the tools, they didn't have the necessary experiences, or the ability to think or to advocate for systems versus neighborhoods, or, or, you know, particular portions of the population. So I, I'm looking at the recommendation to continue and say, of the four resolutions that we put on the table, this one, we wanted advice in community because we knew it was so disruptive. So if your advice is, say, no, let's not do something, you know, disruptive, let's chunk out smaller changes, do we go back and say, advisory committee envisioned that small chunk or provide them what that looks like? Is that, you know, because I, I want to make sure... Is that, you know, cause I, I want to make sure that who, whatever we do, they have the opportunity to be successful. And we don't churn because when we started this, the fiscal cliff was closer, right? We were looking at next year not being able to, to finance what we do, right? The state gave us an opportunity to look and think more strategically, right? And look out, but 26, 27, 28, right? You're going to run back into that because we have a structural deficit. Our full-time equivalency teachers ratio against our students, especially when the students are declining, is wrong, right? And it's going to continue to cause this problem. So we have a problem that's not going to move. If we go back and we iterate and miss a year, right? Or we delay, we're going to miss our opportunity to be strategic. And so my, my question is, do you think there is a chance that we can put this task in front of a task force and have outputs from this task force in time for a potential referendum question that we want to hit in November, which we have to plan for, we have to communicate and advocate for. So I'm, we're talking six weeks maximum if we, we do this. So.
I do, I, I do think, I do think we can get a proposal with this advisory committee to the board in June. What I would like for is permission to work with Wolfert, then Lori and Josh, and put together a draft scenario to bring to the committee based on the things listed, facility task force recommendations, addressing budget deficit through school closure consolidation, reducing overall district capacity to address declining enrollment and minimize student movement. I'd like to start with a draft to bring to committee and then ask them to review and tweak it, get better. And still stay on the timeline to bring it to the board. And we would include the month of May, we're getting community feedback again, right Lori?
Uh, yes. So we're going to need to look at having, uh, so that basically the calendaring that Wolfert has done for children, for the end of the project's going to have to change, right? Cause we're going to have basically going back up for community and putting here rather shortly. We're going to have to change that up a little bit. So we'll get to you all a new calendar for that. Um, I would argue that I feel it's, uh, having the committees remain involved is really important because they can provide us those things maybe we didn't think of, right? So they're a good sounding board. What did, what was it that we didn't think of as we proposed this? As well as, um, you know, uh, being an optimist here, right? That we're going to come to a really good result and that they're very supportive of the final plan. And will also be willing to help us communicate to families and community members as to how we got to this final result. So I, so I, I do think that we could, we could see some positive momentum. I also, just this is my personal opinion, but I feel like with the middle and high schools, I, I understand the concerns there. But I also feel that we're going to be looking at that new addition on Preble. That's going to give us a little extra capacity there. Seeing a problem is seeing a declining enrollment, not significant, but they're going to see probably a little bit more wiggle room that they've had than in the past, if that trend continues. So I think this allows us to do some things that probably need to be done to continue to address that excess, excess capacity in the district. While also allowing some things to play out, which is seeing how that, seeing how that trend continues on the east side. And if some of this development that people have talked about actually come to fruition, or if, you know, or if we kind of continue as we are. As well as I, I'm very hopeful that this investment that we've made at West High School will really kind of see things turn and change over there. I'm, I'm really hopeful of that. And so I think this buys us a little bit of time to kind of see how some of those things play out at the secondary level.
Please.
And just to point out again, uh, this is the natural process. We, we had the committee beat up some ideas. We took it to the community, we got the feedback and we're listening. So this is all part of the process and we're responding to what the community was asking for.
So I hear you and I, I appreciate that. And my, my comments were just, you know, when we go back or, you know, do we set them up for success? So I concede and I understand that our problem is primarily at the elementary school level, right? When we have these single track schools that are underutilized, which creates the ratios that are out of whack. So I completely understand that part of it. As, as long as the committee knows that continue the work of boundary is not an open-ended discussion that can go and that we do still have decision on windows, right? And we, we, we have to act quickly so that we can do what, what we were elected to do is make sure that this district remains on solid financial footing.
Before I ask, what I was going to say, um, what's the new addition at Preble?
Uh, sure. So you're actually going to start to see some work happening, I believe this week. Your families are going to be getting in some communication regarding some changes that are going to be happening there as they prepare to put on six additional classrooms and expand your commons. And that's all part of the November 2022 referendum.
May I ask how they're going to do that?
Unfortunately, I don't have the plans in front of me, but I do believe it goes out towards the side of the building is my understanding.
As far as I know, we don't have any room. But also, um, going back to what I read, the feedback does not support the K through eight because of the impact of boundaries and feeder patterns, especially at the middle and high school. And please correct me if I'm wrong, just from my understanding. Is it going from middle school into their appropriate high schools? Okay. And then is it from elementary school going into their middle schools? Like Red Smith going into the Red Smith Middle School and Bear going into Edison Middle School? Got it. Um, I will say around this whole issue and you guys trying to figure things out. In my opinion, in Miles' perspective, whatever you guys are going to do, do it like as soon as possible. Teachers want this just to be done, a decision to be made and get it over with. Because all they want to do is have a job next year to be able to teach what they need to teach. To get these kids a passing grade, to fit the standards, to literally get these kids to learn. They just want these kids to go on to high school and pass high school and go to college. They cannot do that if this situation and problem is still going on next year. They could also not do that. They can also not teach their kids if a whole bunch of other crap in the building is going on. Like more, we need, obviously need more task force. We need more committees to help you guys analyze the problems and to bounce ideas off of them. Yes, we can do that, but I think if we bring in teachers into this, not that I'm saying you are, but if we bring in teachers into this, that will just take away from their teaching time. So I'm asking you, please don't do that because they need to be in the classroom teaching their kids and they need time to do that. So. I think what I'm trying to say here is please don't ask teachers to do any more than what they're already doing. As a teacher's kid myself, my mom's just happy she has a job next year at Red Smith. She is teaching at Week Black right now, grades two and three as a combined classroom. That's already as hard enough as it is. Like, it's crazy. The stuff that I hear is crazy. Like, I'm sorry, but just whatever you're going to do, please do it.
Brian.
Lori, I just want to thank you for the work being done on this, especially it's kind of briefly mentioned, but the, the fact that this took place at the Neville Museum as opposed to one of our buildings is something I brought up at the start of this whole process that there's a lot of people that are uncomfortable coming into schools. And to have it in a neutral location like that, for whatever reason that they're uncomfortable coming into schools, I think was a significant step as far as the outreach with it. I also want to stress in, in regards to emails that we've received and just a general thing that I've brought up many times, besides this being a once in generation opportunity for us to really fix what's going on here. One of the beautiful things about Green Bay is that we, outside of Preble right now, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. We have that opportunity that if you see a program in a high school and you want to open and roll into that school from where you are, assuming that there's capacity, you're able to do that. And as a family that takes advantage of that, I think it's something that definitely sets us apart. So as family looking at different high schools and where they may be, you know, we don't have a boundary plan here, where those potential changes may come up. We have a lot of great stuff taking place in all of our high schools. And to be concerned that your shift is going to the school that you may not have urgently planned on, I encourage you to go into those schools, the work that's being done at West. The, the work that's being done at East and at Southwest and all of our high schools. We are doing a phenomenal job teaching students and making sure that we're making those connections and providing that education, regardless to what high school you go to. So anyone that's listening, please look into those schools as well. They're fantastic.
I just wanted to say that, um, I, I was like you, James, I was a little disappointed that we weren't able to get buy-in for either one of the scenarios. So much work, months and months of work have led up to this point. So much work by so many people, including members of the public. And so it, it felt a little like, oh no, what do we do now? But I, I trust Vicky when she says that a scenario C is very viable in this, in this instance. The, 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 not disconnect, that's not the right word. This committee's work is not the same as the work that the board has to do. They, they have a narrow focus and a narrow, there's a narrow request of them. And, and they, and they're focusing on that and I have faith that they can get there. But for the boards, from the board's point of view, at least this is how I look at this. We're, we're planning for, not the right now, we're planning for a decade from now. We're thinking about 20 years from now and we kind of have to think in those terms. So, um, and both of those scenarios, A and B, were very, very ambitious and required a lot of, a lot of, a lot of painful change. And so I can see why the reaction was, oh no, um, I, I don't, I don't think we can do that. But I, I'm, I'm glad that we can have another, a scenario, a scenario C and that we can stay on track too, because we cannot let this linger, this process. It's, it's draining time and energy and resources from staff. And I think our, I wouldn't be at all surprised to know that our community at large is, is getting pretty fed up. Maybe that's not the right, impatient, maybe that's tired, you know? Even though this work is deeply necessary and the drivers of it, the, um, the fiscal part of it, the lowering enrollment, the aging buildings, all of that is still very much in front of us and has to be dealt with. You know, I, I, I would like us to stay on track and, and get through this next phase. And then, and then maybe take a big breath. So anyway, anyone else have anything else to say?
Okay.
I might need to ask Melissa for help on this one. I don't know if we need a formal vote, which couldn't happen at today's meeting. Or can we just move forward with putting, working with the committee over the next few weeks to, to move us forward? The, for the resolution?
Okay. So we'll hold on that, off on that right now.
Is there, is there voting?
Um, we, we are meeting on the 15th, yeah, on, on Monday.
So there's potential to put this as a, an agenda?
It's a brief, a brief special meeting before that.
It isn't, it's a special.
Okay.
We can just add it as an agenda item before the interviews.
Isn't the 15th a special meeting?
Yeah. So we can vote.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Okay. All right. I think, are you ready to move on, Vicky?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Yes.
Um, all right, then we're going on to, next on our agenda, under policy and governance, uh, we've got some policies to review and that is under Melissa.
Good evening. Tonight we are bringing forward the policies, starting with policy 453.1 through rule 453.8, which are all of the nursing services policies. Uh, I want to thank Pam Weiss, the department chair, who worked with her team to review these policies and bring forward some, mostly our minor changes, uh, because they are really great at updating their policies. So we can go through them one by one if you'd like, and if you have questions, we can.
There are quite a few policies here. So, um, I, I could just. On any of them? Should we start there?
Okay. So let's just start with 453.1. Any questions on 453.1 emergency nursing services? Nope. Okay. 453.1 rule one, which is the emergency nursing, nursing services procedures. Questions on that one? 453.1 rule two, procedures for handling illnesses and injuries. Any questions? 453.1 rule three, procedures for management of student allergies. No questions? 453.2 immunization procedures and, I'm sorry, I skipped. Or no, I didn't. 453.2 student immunizations. They're clipped together, sorry. Okay. 453.2 rule, immunization procedures and responsibilities. 453.3 communicable disease control. 453.3 rule, communicable disease procedures. And we're proposing to repeal 453.31 exposure control plan and put that in 453.3. 453.32, that's the headlights policy. Makes me itch every time I read it. Okay. 453.4 administering, administering medication to students? Did I?
No changes, sorry.
Okay. 453.4 administering medication to students. No questions? 453.4 rule one, administering medication procedures. 453.4 rule two, staff administration of epinephrine. 453.4 rule three, staff administration of Narcan. Okay. And then 453.6 is third-party contract health and social services personnel. And then there's an exhibit with that that we've updated. And then the 453.6 procedures, which we are proposing to repeal to put into the policy. And then 453.8, use of automated external defibrillators. Is that where your question is, Lynn? Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I, my, first of all, I had questions, YJ, and asked for being repealed. And I understand you say we're going to put it in the policy, but I just don't know what that means.
We're just folding the language into the policy. The, the policy was one or two sentences. The procedures really made sense just to incorporate it in the policy and not have a standalone policy in a standalone.
So you're consolidating?
Consolidating. Correct.
Just one other little question. At the end of each of these, which is typical with all of these policies that we review, you always have the state statutes at the end. And then there's something called cross-reference. Could you please explain what that is?
So cross-references are typically to our own internal policies. If one speaks to another, then we will note that on the bottom so that if you are looking at, for example, the emergency nursing services policy. the Emergency Nursing Services Policy, we would, may want to know what else that impacts within the district's board policies. Sometimes we'll reference, so we've referenced our District Exposure Control Plan, which is a plan that we're required to have by state law, our medical standing orders, which we're also required to have, our nurses' operate understanding orders from a physician, and we are required to have those on file as well.
Okay. Does any, anybody have anything for Melissa before she wraps it up here? Okay, then we'll be voting on these. We'll be voting on all these policies. Well, I'm so sorry, because I know you love all these, these endless votes. We'll be voting on them on the 29th. And with that, that completes our agenda for the night. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.